Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to hear conditional use permit requests, and to review appeals from the decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'll take a minute here to introduce our board members as well as the city staff that will be assisting with our hearing. On the audience's left is board member Nathan Blake. Next to him is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Marla Jones. On the audience's right is Justin Gross. Next to him is Dave Gare. And next to Dave is Lynn Carlson. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. And on my left, city staff, city legal counsel is Judy Parks Cruz. And down here in the front on the left by the podium, we have Bert Droste, city planner, and Eric Lundey, city planner. I'll go through our procedure here for the day. For some of you, this may be your first time that you're in front of us. You may hope it's the only time you have to be here. But I'll give you the background on how the hearing works, but we will help you through the hearing. So don't be nervous about the procedure. We will take you through that. First of all, while this is an open public meeting, it is a formal legal hearing. The meeting is being recorded for both audio and video. In fact, we should be broadcasting live right now on the city's cable channel, or you may be watching us late night in a rerun. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda as well as the staff recommendations. Copies of both the agenda and the staff recommendations are available in the tray right outside the door here. So when I'm through with my remarks, if you didn't grab a copy of the agenda or the staff recs yet, feel free to step up and get one of those. This board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. And if the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the requested relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. Each appeal will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. When an item is announced, staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal. They will distribute any written comments or information that has been received prior to the hearing. The appellant or a representative of the appellant will then be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. Then anyone present in opposition to the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. The board will then ask any additional questions of staff before giving the applicant three more minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments, if they so choose. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. So if you're here as a resident, we need your name and address. If you're here in a professional capacity as an attorney, architect, or engineer, we just need your address for place of business. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. After all testimonies provided, the board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will then immediately deliberate the request and make a decision. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until about mid-next week if you need to go to the city's permit and development center for any necessary building permits. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, and that will be provided to appropriate staff. Any appeal that is approved by the board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision of this board, or such approval shall expire. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first portion of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. They will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual present or a member of this board that requests that such an item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur under the regular portion of the agenda. And I'll come back to that in a minute when we get to the consent agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So if you have any photos, or maps, or site plans that you'd like to show us or add to your presentation with, you'll need to contact staff after the hearing to either provide them with that or a suitable copy for their records. Some housekeeping items, we ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to not limit or be distracting during the hearing that's in progress, and you're doing a fine job of that. We'd also ask that you ensure your cellphone has been silenced. And if you need to use a restroom, you can leave through the door here. Just walk past the staircase. You don't have to go back downstairs. There's restrooms to the left past the stairs. Once the agenda item that you're interested in has been completed, you are welcome to leave the hearing. So what we'll go ahead and do is have Mr. Bert Droste give us a review of our agenda for today. Bert, anything we need to know about, any changes?
No, Bert Droste, planner for the City of Des Moines. I just want the members in the audience to know that our equipment isn't working today. So we'll do our best to, if you have any photos or plans you want to show the board, we'll do our best to get it to the board members. And the members all have copies of everything staff's going to be explaining in our staff presentations, so we'll work through it.
Yep. So if folks maybe have a photo or something they want to show us, we might have to just kind of pass that around here and then hand it back up to you all for copies.
Right. We just had one item on the consent portion of the agenda, and that's the appeal at 100 East McKinley Avenue. Appeal for an exception of four square feet over the allowed 24 square feet of, allowed for apartment building.
Okay.
We have recommended approval.
So item one is an exception request to allow some additional signage by square footage. Again, that's at 100 East McKinley. Would there be anyone in the audience that would be opposed to granting the requested exception? All you'd have to do is raise your hand if you're opposed to it. If somebody would be in opposition, then we could hear that on the regular agenda. So anybody in opposition, just raise your hand. All right, seeing none, would there be any questions from the board on item one? If none, would there be a motion then to approve item one, the exception request at 100 East McKinley? All right, motion by Marla. Second by Nathan. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so item one passes. So if you're here for item one, staff will have that written up by mid-next week. So if you have to get or amend a sign permit, they should have that documented for you again by mid-next week. So thank you for coming in, whoever was here for one. Okay, good job. Okay, then that will bring us to item number two, which is a variance request at 414 61st Street.
Yeah, item number two is a business previously known as Cornerstone Community Credit Union. They are rebranding as Vibrant Credit Union. If you remember, a few years back, they came to the board of adjustment to get some variances that allowed them to put up two signs on the outside of their building. They're now wanting to take those down to put up new signs that reflect their new name. So it is a reasonable appeal. The subject property is zoned flood district, so they don't actually earn any signage for the use. The use is considered legal nonconforming, but since it's flood, they do not earn any new signs. So in the packet in front of you, the, I guess the top page was the overall map. Then the second shows you what sign they would want to put on the north facade of the building. It's only 7.25, I'm sorry, it's 12.22 square feet. It's a foot, 1.83 feet tall by 6.67 feet wide. So it's not real large. And then the next page shows you which sign would be removed to make way for that new sign. And then on the south side of the building, they want to put a 9.89 square foot sign, which is 1.58 feet tall by 6.26 feet wide. Again, not real large. And then the next photo shows the sign that would be removed to make way for this new sign. And then the next two pages are just the site photos that show the site as it is today. And then the last page is the consent map. You'll see, we did get a lot of comment cards from homeowners to the north who are concerned about the signage. But staff has recommended approval of the signs. We feel that they're small enough that they're very reasonable for a bank, or for, I'm sorry, for a credit union to have. We feel that they face unnecessary hardship if they were not allowed to have any signage at all. So we have recommended approval, subject to two conditions. First one being, any sign should be installed by licensed sign contractor in accordance with the sign permit issued by the permit and development center. And the second one is that any signage installed should be in substantial conformance with the renderings submitted with this application. Any questions for me?
Are these just basically replacing the signs that were there? There's no new lights, no new sizes?
Right. The new signs are actually smaller than the signs that are being taken down.
Mel, do you know, is there lighting that would be behind these signs that stays on 24 hours? Or, because I think that was one of the concerns raised.
Yeah.
That might be a question for the applicant.
Yeah, but it says they were going to be illuminated with white LEDs. They would be internally illuminated.
And Bert, we had a discussion on this last time, and I can't recall if the city's sign ordinance pertained or not, but they have kind of the cupolo turret on the building, a four-sided kind of glass window thing. And there's, appears to be a, I'd call it a sign or a marquee that has some information on it that faces to the south that's lit. You can see it on the last page. Is that regulated, or does that count toward their square footage here?
Since it's interior to a building, it doesn't count towards their square footage. But they are retaining that sign. We don't allow electronic signs to be used as window signs, but the board did grant a variance to allow them to have that electronic sign.
So does that variance still carry through, or would that be included in your...
Yeah, they're taking this out. They can change the message on it.
And to my, the orientation here, that faces primarily to the south for viewing away from the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Bert?
So the flood zone restriction is, is the intent that no development occurs in those flood zone areas, is that why?
That's exactly right.
And it just got rezoned like two months ago?
Right. So it was previously zoned, I know it was split zoned. The north half of the property had already been zoned flood, but now with that new map, the city's flood district was aligned to match the 100-year flood plain. So this whole property is within that FEMA designated 100-year flood plain. So the entire property is now zoned floodway, or flood district.
Mm-hmm. Good question.
So is that why they're here today?
Right. If they rezoned commercially...
That's what I thought I read. So thanks, Nathan, for that clarification.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Bert? Okay, seeing none, applicant or representative of the applicant, you can step up if you'd like to kind of sell us on your reasoning. You've got up to 10 minutes to present your case. And we just need you to start off with your name and address.
One second, two. These, maybe it's... Hello, my name is Derek Thurston. I am the facility manager for Vibrant Credit Union. So essentially, as I explained before, we are just planning on taking down, it's just a rebranding. We are taking down the existing signage and put, we would like to put back up our brand in the same exact spot. I know there were some questions about the illumination. The north side sign is not illuminated where the south side sign is illuminated. It's the same way that it is currently right now, so we plan on keeping that same design.
Okay. Simple enough?
Yes.
Any questions for Derek? Okay, all right. Model presentation.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody wants to step up and say we like it? You have up to five minutes. All right, seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, going once, going twice. If there's no opposition, if there's any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, then we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
Well, most of the negative comment cards were regarding elimination of the north sign.
Right.
And since there is not going to be any, I think all those are pretty much moot. And so I would go ahead and, it's just replacing what was there. So it's kind of grandfathered into me, even though they're growing a little bit smaller. I recommend that we go staff recommendation.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by Lynn, a second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Okay, you've been granted for that. And again, staff will get a copy of the decision in order to you mid-next week, and then you can use that as you might need to for your sign permit. So thanks for coming in. Okay, that'll bring us to item three, which is a variance, variances, multiple variances, and a type-two exception request at 1,000 Walnut Street.
This one is not going to be as easy to explain as that last one.
Is it because of our new zoning ordinance? Just teasing.
No, item number three is a series of appeals that would allow for, I believe, a total of 18 signs on an existing building. Our new code...
You're saying 18?
Yes. But there are three different businesses within this building, and each of the business, each business earns some signage. So I'll try to make, I'll try to explain to my best of my ability. The subject property is the Hotel Fort Des Moines property. The majority of the building will be occupied by the hotel use, but they are going to have two restaurant uses on the street level of the building. One at the corner would be a small café. And then where Django used to be, there'd be a higher, or a nicer restaurant named Proud Foot and Bird. So as I mentioned, each of those signs, or each of those businesses earned their own series of signs. So in your packet, there's a sheet that looks like this. This kind of lays out where all of the signs would be. The business at the corner of 10th and Walnut would have five awning signs. Then the restaurant at the southeast corner of the building would have four awnings with a total of six signs. And then the hotel itself would have two signs over their entryways, and then a total of four projecting signs at the corners, and then one like roof-mounted sign on the south facade near the top of the building. So let's go through the packet. This first sheet shows you where the signs on the north facade would be. Get on the north facade, there would be some awnings for the restaurant, and then the projecting signs at the corners, and the bronze sign over the entrance to the hotel. The next sheet is the east facade, which faces 10th Street. On the left side, there's the Proud Foot and Bird restaurant that would have four awnings with a total of six signs, as well as the sign above the hotel entrance, and then two projecting signs at the corners. And then it would also have some of the awning signs for the restaurant at the northwest corner. Then on the south facade of the building, the only sign that's being proposed is the large Hotel Fort Des Moines sign that would be installed on the parapet wall, or on the screening wall surrounding the rooftop mechanical equipment. And the west, the next page is the west facade. There are no signs proposed on the west side. So that brings us to the sheet here that has the green awnings. Those are the five awnings that are proposed for the Hobnob Restaurant at the corner. And then the next page just shows the dimensions of those five awning signs. Then the sheet with blue awning signs shows the four awnings that would be proposed for the Proud Foot and Bird restaurant. You'll see that the sign at, I guess the furthest sign to the right, which extends the furthest into the right-of-way, that is one sign that the city's recommending denial of. We felt that, or actually, this traffic and transportation division feels that that's too close to the street, so any snow that gets cleared from 10th Street might damage that. And that would also require vacation of the right-of-way for that sign. And the next page just shows the dimensions of those six signs on the four awnings. And then we move to the signs for the hotel. The next two sheets just show the signs that would be located on the existing canopies above the north and the east entrances to the hotel. Those canopies have already been through the vacation process, or vacation or right-of-way process, so the signs could be posted on those. And then this next sheet that shows the projecting sign, they're wanting to have four of these signs, which they would be located at the corners of the building. And our new code requires any projecting sign to be at least 30 feet from another projecting sign. So the two that they're proposing at the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast corner of the hotel requires a variance of separation between the two signs, since they don't provide that 30 feet of separation from each other. Then the next sheet shows the, what the sign on the south facade near the roof would look like. It's three and a half feet tall by, I believe by 42 feet long. So it's, it's a fairly large sign. This drawing here says that it would be illuminated. I think that's the sign that has the neighbors most concerned.
Run that by me again, Bert.
Sure. Yeah, on the south facade of the building...
Oh, okay, yep, the one on top of the building, the roof sign.
They're proposing a fairly large 200-plus square foot sign that would be lit. And it seems like most of the phone calls I received from neighbors were mostly in regards to this sign here.
What are the variances that are associated with that particular request?
Well, they don't earn any signs on the south facade, since they don't have any building frontage on the south side. So they need the variances of, yeah, the last two variances listed, a variance of one sign over the maximum zero signs on the south non-frontage facade, and then a variance of 231 square feet over the allowed zero square feet on the south facade. And then the next several photos are just photos of the hotel, which is just wrapping up an extensive renovation project. And then at the end, we have the consent map, which shows a few parts in support, but there are several condo owners to the southeast that have concerns with this sign. So as I alluded to earlier, staff has recommended denial of this rooftop sign, or of the appeals necessary to allow this rooftop sign. We didn't feel that they demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the variances. And we have also recommended denial of the variances needed to allow this, or this canopy sign for the restaurant that would extend over 10 feet from the building and would require two legs coming down to the ground to support the awning. And then we've also recommended denial of the variance, of the provision that requires 30 feet of separation between two projecting signs. And that really is here at the northeast corner of the building. They're having a sign on the north facade at the corner and a sign on the east facade at the corner. So they're really just a couple feet from each other, and the new code requires any projecting sign to be at least 30 feet from any other projecting sign. So we have recommended denial of that variance. So really, to get around that, they could just slide the projecting signs further on the building so that they are at least 30 feet apart. But I know that might mess up the spacing with the awnings proposed for the Hobnob Otherwise, staff has recommended approval of all of the exceptions, which would allow them to have the, all of the canopies they've requested for the Hobnob Restaurant, and three of the four canopies, I'm sorry, awnings for the Proud Foot and Bird Restaurant at the southeast corner of the building.
Now, Bert, the two that projected out that there was a 30-foot variance difference, would they be able to just have one of those without a variance?
Yeah, they could just have one of those without the variance.
Okay. It wouldn't need a variance if they just have the one?
Right.
Okay, that, thank you, that was good.
Yeah.
But if they took one of those two down, they wouldn't be...
Okay.
Their recommendation was to move them further apart, sorry.
Either remove one or move them 30 feet apart.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. If they didn't have any advertising on the awnings, would those be, but they, they wouldn't need any variance or anything? It's just because they're putting advertising on it there, okay?
Right. And we did measure the signage as being the entire awning. That way, in the future, if they ever wanted to replace the awnings, they could have a larger emblem than what they're showing today. So we, and the new code does require us to measure an awning sign as the whole awning face anyway. But I was just pointing out that they, over time, they could swap out the awnings with a different design or a different color.
But we can't restrict it?
Well, you sure can.
Could we? Okay.
Yeah.
If you deny it, you've restricted it.
Wow. Do you think keep it?
Yeah. Bert, related to what I want to call the covered entrance canopies, you know, with the two legs, and engineering and staff feels that, yeah, it's too close to the street for, you know, normal maintenance. How far out could a covered canopy stick?
About three feet.
About three feet, before you'd get into needing to lease airspace from the city or other things?
All of the canopies, or all of the awnings would require an area-away permit from the city's traffic and transportation.
Separate from us?
Right.
Okay. But those other canopies, I'm guessing, are within the three feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Bert? Okay, well presented, thanks very much. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Good afternoon and welcome. Good, thank you. We just need your name and address, and then you've got up to 10 minutes to present your case.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me. Raj Patel. Address is 901 Park Road in Iowa City, Iowa, 52246. Hear the, talk about the signage at the Hotel Fort Des Moines. I'll give you a little bit of history and background on the project as well, so you understand the asks that we're making today. When we took this project on, we knew it was in the center and urban core of downtown, where any new hotels that are being built, you see that they have a lot of visibility, a lot of access for guests to be able to understand how to get in and out of the hotel. It was also important for us to activate the bottom floor to the community and have multiple outlets and venues of restaurants and bars. That was actually a very strong emphasis from the City of Des Moines when we worked with them to get as many venues on the first floor as possible, which we were able to achieve and are very happy with that. Lastly, it's, as everybody knows, very historic building, so we cannot have signage that secures into over 90... into over 90% of the building. It's very restrictive with SHIP-O and the National Park Service to have signage in the building. So with all that being said, and then lastly, the original use was a hotel which we are maintaining in its strongest extent as a full-service hotel. The hotel business is unique as opposed to the office business or residential business in the sense that all of your guests are brand-new guests that come in almost every single day on a recurring business trying to find your building and the, it's all on Google Maps now, it's all online, and it's all from visibility of your eye. Rarely are they calling the hotel to ask where you're located unless if they're really having an issue to find you. So with all that being said, I believe that we have presented the absolute most tasteful signage package possible with the awnings that go all the way around the building that's historic in nature. That is a very historic feel for that building. We're happy to be able to present that, the signs on the canopies, the flag-mounted signs that are at the corners of the buildings. And then the rooftop signage is very important to us because it's the only signage that is really visible when you're driving on MLK, when you're driving to the building from the airport, or coming from the interstate, coming down a floor in MLK. And it's the only illuminated sign that we have on the entire project and property. So it's, I think, a landmark sign for the building, for the city of Des Moines. When you look at the neighborhood and the surrounding uses, Nationwide has a parking garage right next to us that has an illuminated sign that is actually larger than ours on a parking garage where, you know, there, I'm not sure how much signage you really need on a parking garage, whereas we're a 300-room hotel with guests coming in every single day. So that was our, one of our case studies. We believe the signage is more tasteful as well, it does not have as much illumination as the Nationwide sign. It actually sits higher than the Nationwide sign. It sits on top of 11 stories. So when you look at the 11th Street lofts and the rest of those condo buildings in the neighborhood, they would have more direct light infiltration from the Nationwide sign that sits at six stories versus us that's all the way up at 11 stories. So that was, that was an area that we wanted to be very mindful and tasteful of. We believe we did that. I will say from Bert's review and the city's review of the signage, I've had a chance to read through the recommendations, and there are some areas where it's not as bothersome for us to move the two, the awning that protrudes out into the sidewalk. They made some valid points with snow removal and different things, so I understand that. The flag signs at the corners, that wouldn't be a big deal for us in terms of the actual operations of our business. So if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them, but that is the general case for the signage.
I think from reading the comment cards and everything, the biggest concern is the illuminated sign on the rooftop. Is that going to be on 24/7, or is there a time you're going to turn off at night, assuming most people are to the hotel by 11 o'clock, midnight? What can we do to reduce the light pollution?
It would, it would be on at all hours of the night, just as most of the illuminated signs around the city of Des Moines are. I'm not sure if there are any that turn off, but it'd be more important for this building as well, just from the standpoint that the guests do come at all hours. There may not be many that come between 2:00 AM and 6:00 or 7:00 AM, but they are coming and going at all hours of the night.
Yeah, they've got GPS for two to four. Okay, like I said, um...
Sorry, what was that?
No, I was gonna say, most of them have GPS, but that just seems to be the thing, how bright is the sign going to be? Is it going to be neon?
If I could ask a question, are there any signs that do turn off in the city of Des Moines?
I'm not aware of that.
We, yeah, we actually have some related to schools and churches that we do require they reduce or end illumination at certain times. Do I have another nine, 10-story hotel where it's off or on? Can't think of one, but, but yeah, we have had restrictions on hourly operation of some lighted signs in the city.
Sure.
I'm just trying to make it a win-win because I know you need the sign. You know, once you said you could see it from MLK, that made a difference to me, but I know that we are looking at trying not to have it look like, as one person said, Las Vegas, you know?
Yeah.
So it was just a question.
Sure. And I'll also make a comment on that. We had looked at different colors of the sign. We wanted to have the ability to change the colors, and that's something that is still possible for us, but I would be more than inclined to just keep it all illuminated with no colors. It does not flash, it does not have any kind of, any of those kind of mechanisms to it, which I believe is more tasteful for a hotel from 1919.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
The illuminated part is just, is just the letters, is that correct? Or is it the back of it as well?
It's, I think our signage company would know that's backlit or just the letters? Facelit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess the difficulty I've got, and I appreciate the presentation and I appreciate the willingness to be reasonable on a couple of the things that the city's gotten back to you on. Obviously, I appreciate the development in general here in Des Moines. The challenge for me is that the variance test is so strict, it's, in my mind at least, next to impossible to get for signs. Because the one aspect of the test that you have to meet is that the subject property cannot yield a reasonable return from any use permitted by the subject zoning regulations, which you have to show by proof that the owner's been deprived of all beneficial or productive use of the subject property. It's not sufficient merely to show that the value of the land has been depreciated by the regulations, or that a zoning variance would permit the owner to maintain a more profitable use. And so I guess the challenge for me, when people come with requests for variances with respect to signs, is that you can run a business without, say, this top sign, right? Like, it could still, you could still have a hotel, it might be slightly less profitable, I don't, I don't know. But it doesn't seem, I just don't know how you can meet that test, but if you have an argument to how you do, that I'd be interested in hearing that.
Yeah, I would, I would, I can walk you through what would happen if this sign is not approved. This is Hotel Fort de Moine curio collection by Hilton, it's a soft brand. This is a requirement by Hilton to have a rooftop sign. This was already presented to them, approved. SHIP-O has approved it, NPS has approved it. So if this was not approved, we would need to go back to the franchise. They would have hardship with that. We'd need to see how they're going to interact with us. And then just from a pure standpoint of guests finding us and having returned bookings and visits, it certainly would be a hardship on our business from a revenue and profitability standpoint, to where we would potentially be delaying the opening to figure out what to do about signage.
Does Hilton require the sign on the rooftop to be lighted?
Yes, they do.
Okay. All right. Raj, just observation and then a question. I think any of us who are Des Moines natives or have lived here a long time know the historic character of this hotel. I used to go to receptions and banquets and executive meetings down there all the time. I think most of us are thrilled of your investment here, and we kind of wait with bated breath for everything to reopen, we're excited. So that historic nature of the hotel's very important, and you referenced how the awnings would reflect that, and those awnings were historically there. I'm not old enough to remember this, but to the best of your knowledge, was there a sign on the roof of the Hotel Fort de Moine at any one time that advertised it? Or what direction did that sign face?
Yeah, we have seen historical photos of signage on the southern portion of the building where we're proposing, and we've also seen historical photos of a much larger sign on the northeast portion of the building where our flag currently is.
Sure.
We've seen, that one was almost two or three stories above the building.
It was, okay.
And, yeah, it had Hotel Fort de Moine with two separate lines. And we've seen it both ways, we're not sure what the actual, you know, what it was.
Yeah. And again, going back to early 70s, I don't remember it being there then, but this goes back to what, 1919 or so?
Yeah, 19, 19 to 1936 is where those photos were.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? We'll do that going once, going twice. Anybody speak in support? Okay, seeing none. Anybody to speak in opposition? For the moment, just raise your hand if you want to speak in opposition. Okay, I'd say you can just decide amongst yourselves who wants to go first. You've got up to five minutes, and we just need your name and address to kick us off.
Good afternoon. My name is Elsie Massman, and I am here as the owner of the 10th Street Lofts, and the address of the 10th Street Lofts is 112 10th Street. My husband and I, through a corporate structure, own the 10th Street Lofts, which directly faces the southern side of the Hotel Fort de Moine. Our building is located right at the corner of Mulberry and 10th Street, and we feel like we would have the major impact of the illuminated sign that would be on the south facade. We are vigorously objecting to this sign. We feel like it is huge, it's three and a half feet, is about this tall, and with it in the paperwork, said it was going to be 66 feet long. That's an enormous billboard-sized sign. We have 30 apartments that immediately face that direction, and we feel like that will be an enormous detriment to the tenants who live there, that they would not be able to have a darkened apartment due to the signage that would be on the top of the building. We feel like that it would liken that part of downtown to a Las Vegas strip. We feel that we would suffer economic hardship because people would not want to rent our apartments, we would have to lower our rents. We would additionally be worried about future development. We own 10th Street Parking, which is at the corner of 10th and Cherry, and that is a surface parking lot, and we have our eye on that surface parking lot for a potential future development in downtown, and that could additionally impact our investment in that. We feel like signs of this nature should be restricted to the tallest of buildings, and this doesn't meet that standard. This building is only 10 stories tall, our buildings are four and six stories tall, so we would be directly impacted by that light. I know that Raj said that the light is going to be at the 10th story, but as we all know, light doesn't just stay at the 10th story and go up. I mean, it illuminates everything. I find it hard to believe that it's necessary to have such a huge illuminated sign on the top of the hotel, as everyone has a GPS in their hand and it's easy to find something like the Hotel Fort de Moine that has been here since 1919. I don't really feel like it's necessary to have such a huge illuminated sign. I feel like that we are feeling like this is not a simple sign request, it is a huge billboard advertisement that would negatively impact our investment, our home, our tenants whose homes these, that they enjoy, and would impact them significantly. We are very much against it.
Okay. Questions for Elsie? Nathan?
You're just opposed to the southern-facing illuminated sign, all the other ones you're okay with?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And Elsie, just to get the lay of the land, so you own property on the southwest corner of 10th and Mulberry, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, four, six-story building there.
Okay, so...
Did you have that little green space?
Yes, so we have the little green space, that's our car.
Little green space dog park, yeah.
And then the building next to the green space...
The south of that green space.
...is 10th Street Lofts, that's the Herring Motor Car Company building, and that side with the green space is all full windows apartments that look out that direction.
And you've mentioned another property?
It's right behind it, it's a six-story building.
To the south again?
Yes, to the south again.
Okay, yep, yep, I got you. Okay. And I guess I'll ask this to staff later, but I just want to get an idea of where your property sits, so, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And those are nice, nice job on those buildings, too. I'm not sure, did you do the original renovation on those?
Uh, my husband, yes.
Yeah, those were excellent.
Thank you.
Bet.
We're very proud of it.
Okay, any other questions for Elsie? Okay, thank you very much for coming down and giving your testimony. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Come on down.
My name's Tim Facto, I live at 111 10th Street, across from her, and I was concerned as soon as I got the paperwork on this, because it was, it was very difficult for someone who's not used to reading these things about signs and size and projections, to even understand what they're talking about. And what I wondered was if there's a computerized diagram of what this is going to look like finished. That would have helped a lot, right from the beginning. But anyway, there seems like there's been, you know, precedent set for historic buildings and the historic tax credits, and I'm wondering what kind of restrictions were put on Bubba's and on the Clemens Building that's on the northwest corner of 10th and Mulberry. I mean, their signs seem to be very unobtrusive, and this, when I hear things like 16, 17, 18 signs, it just, it seems almost circus-like in, to my, to my mind's eye, without having diagrams to go by.
Has he seen this packet? Have you seen this packet with the, with the signs on them? Bert, do you have next to one of these?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, well, it might help him see...
Yeah, but just to kind of help the person understand what's going on.
This would have helped in the beginning.
Because I thought the same thing until I saw these, so...
Yeah.
But they don't require them to do a sketch-up model or something?
No, 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 not necessarily.
I'm just saying that it might help him in his...
Yeah.
Well, I know what a, I know what a, I know what a aerial view looks like, but I'm talking about is...
Well, there's, there's a lot more in there, and I apologize, that's a lot to just throw at you and go, here, look at this, while you're standing there trying to give your comments, but it does provide some scope and scale of the awnings, the signs at the lower level. And then it does show the sign on top of the building. I think it's E 5.7 is the attachment in the bottom right corner.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I think, you know, the awnings are not, they're very unobtrusive, maybe they could have awnings anyway.
And that's what, that's what I'm taught. And again, the canopies and things like that, it's just hard to visualize for people who aren't acquainted with this type of work.
Right, fully understand that.
The, I guess, I guess the, I heard him talk about getting, you know, changing the canopy signs, some of them, and I, again, I think a computer makeup of that for everyone to see, this should either be denied as the staff, they decided that it should be denied, and it should be denied or delayed until we get further information, more complete. Because just standing here saying you're going to do this or that, that isn't, doesn't always come out to be true in the end. So that's just, that's my opinion on the thing.
And that's fine, that's why we take testimony, so thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Going once, going twice. All right, seeing none, we will come back to the applicant, but do we have any further questions for staff?
Bert, what other hotels downtown have illuminated signs? Is the new Hilton?
Yeah.
Pussy Suites does, the Marriott does.
Marriott definitely does. The AC Hotel on East Grand does.
And if he wanted, if he wanted to do this on the north facade, let's take all the canopies and everything off the map for a minute. If he wanted to have a sign on the top of his building on one of the main entrance sides, which I'm assuming would be east or north, would they be allowed by right-of- would they be allowed by right to do that?
It would, but the canopy signs eat up all of the square footage that they were.
To begin with, okay.
But the fact of illumination is not...
That's not...
No, no, okay.
Do you know how far the signs set back from the edge of the building?
It's a good question, David. And we may, we may have to ask Raj that.
Because that's going to affect...
On this sheet here,
Yeah?
You can see it is set back from the corner.
But everybody talks about all this illumination. If I got a six story building and this is set back, I don't know how many feet from the edge, the visibility of that from the street level, I mean, you're going to have to get up fairly high to see it.
It's a 10 to 11 story building.
Yeah.
And being facelit, it sounds like...
And then tell me, how is it lit again? It's not backlit?
He said facelit. I didn't know if that meant internal.
The picture you're seeing, the letter at the front of the sign, it's not, it doesn't have a halo behind it.
Okay.
The illumination is kind of around the head.
And the size of the sign, we've got the dimensions. We don't, how big are the letters?
Well, three and a half feet tall by two to three feet wide each.
Well, it shows on the drawing that the letters would be three foot six inches tall a piece. So about 42 inches.
Three foot six inches, my end seems 36.
Things I didn't know about Dave.
So it's up to my waist.
Too much information.
Anyone, anyone wants to give me a birthday gift, I've got something coming up. So, it's up to my waist. I mean, and we're talking about how far away. They want to be able to see this from MLK.
And we, Dave, I'd like to come back to that during our discussion. But just, if you're asking Bert a question, let's go ahead and ask questions. But then we can process that and talk through that, if that's okay with you.
So if we're not talking about eating up the signage with the awnings, because that, they would be allowed the sign by right if we weren't looking at any other signage, right?
I'm sorry.
The rooftop sign would be allowed, going off of what Nathan was saying. We had no other signs, if we just had that sign.
If they had no other signs, they could have that on the east side or the north side, but not the south side because if you look at the map, there's the Clemens Building.
It's not a primary entrance.
So they don't have any building frontage.
Frontage, okay.
On Mulberry Street in the south, so they don't earn any.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they wanted to put 50% of what they earn on the north or the east side, then they could have.
How tall is that building right in front of the other south side?
The Clemens Building, generally.
Is that about four stories? Five?
Okay. And again, I go by this stuff all the time. Is the Clemens Building kind of, it's been there a while. That's the old Raccoon River Brewing. Right, right. But it's, it's not new construction. It's a historic, or historically, it's been there a while.
Right.
Yeah. Nathan?
Wait a second. Did you just say that they could get 50% on the south side if they didn't use it on the north and east side?
Right.
Okay, so if they changed all their awnings to just green or whatever, blue, and didn't have signs on them and they earned back?
Well, they probably earned about 200 square feet on the east side so they could put 50% of that, would be 100 square feet.
It would still, yeah.
South side.
All right.
And they're proposing 231?
There's no absolute prohibition on the south side. It's just, you have a different earned amount. Okay, I mean, because it could... But they could take it all off from the north side and then try to use it on the, on the south side. It's just a different way of framing the request, right? Like, I mean, they've earned some amount on the, on the south side. Would they have to abdicate all of, all of the requests for either the east or the north? Or could they have some proportion of it and then share it with the south side?
They would have to sacrifice some of what they want on the north and east side.
Right, with their current request. But would they have to eliminate all requests for one of those two sides or not?
Eliminate?
Yeah, eliminate altogether.
Probably all together, but substantial amount.
Two sides on one side with a certain modest square footage based on the length. And then half of that could go on that non-opulent side.
And then if there was an exception request, they could get...
Then they'd only be able to get one sign on that other, the same, same.
I got you.
This was the same way as our old.
Yeah, no, I just kind of tried to figure out the calculation. I mean, there's a way to do this without coming to us.
Not that large.
No, right.
And Bert, I'm, you know, this is the best view of that sign that appears to be in question here. If everybody can see that. And to me, when I see this, it looks like, oh, it takes up the whole south facade on the roof, but it actually doesn't. We have another diagram that shows, and I'm not sure, you know, if that's 60 foot wide, the sign, the building's probably 110, 120 foot in length possibly. So on the south facade, it doesn't take up the whole top of the roof. It's, it's just a percentage of the roof line. Everybody, I think our board members can see that. Again, we'd be able to show this up here on the screen if we didn't have a bulb burned out or whatever the problem is, so. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for my own reference here that we're not taking up the whole south facade on the roof, correct? Okay. Is this building tall enough that it does or doesn't need screening of mechanical units on the roof?
They still need to screen the mechanicals.
Okay.
And they are, yeah, that sign would go on the wall that screens the rooftop.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, because it looks like he's put some color behind that sign, like, hey, this is my sign backing, but that's actually also maybe functioning as screening of the mechanicals. Okay, got you. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Bert? Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Patel, you get the floor for up to three minutes. If you want to provide us any extra information, rebuttals, facts, answer some questions, we'll wrap it up with you.
Thank you. I can provide some clarification. The building, in terms of the sign, I think it was mentioned 10 stories. The building is 11 stories and the sign actually sits one story above that. So it's on the 12th story. The Clemens Building is six stories tall. And then the Nationwide sign, the letters of that sign are at least double the size of our letters for their Nationwide sign and those are face illuminated as well. And those actually sit closer to the neighbors in question than this sign. The sign does sit back from the rooftop. It sits back probably at least eight to 10 feet from the rooftop, I would say, from the edge of the rooftop. We did look at tiering the sign to get the letters to be larger, to do Hotel Fort, about 10 to 12 feet higher and then De Moine underneath that because you'd be able to see it better from MLK. But we didn't think that that was as tasteful as the sign and we'd get even stronger opposition on that, so we went ahead with this. The main arterial way of MLK and FLUR is the main traffic ways for us to have this sign facing. And SHIPO also has approved this location.
Okay.
So those are some of the kind of clarification points I wanted to make as well as just reiterating, I do believe the awning that sticks out into the sidewalk, that would not give us any hardship to pull that awning in. It makes sense with the snow requirements of the city. And then also the two flag mounts on the corner of the building, I don't believe it would provide undue hardship to the business to stick to the 30 foot requirement there. Without this roof signage, the awnings and the canopies, certainly there will be some delay in opening and we have community events that exceed 500 people starting this summer that would need to be looked at.
All right, thank you, sir.
So the south side is so you can get specifically visuals from MLK is what you're looking at?
Correct.
So moving it to the other side of the building is not going to achieve what you're looking for, right?
No, it would not.
Okay, and does Hilton require, have a specific height or requirements for how big the sign needs to be?
Yeah, any, we're already underneath that, but we've achieved a variance with them, so this, this is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No problem with the sign on the top of the building. If it's a requirement with or lease with Hilton and it is back, it's going to be facelit, you know, which is not a neon sign. I see the rationale for it, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, the fact that it sits back eight or 10 feet, there's a visual restriction there of some kind and I'm not experienced enough to be able to even pretend to think what that's going to look like. But the requirements of Hilton are going to, there's a huge investment they've made in this property. I don't think this sign's that obtrusive. The fact that Nationwide does have a sign that's bigger, it's lower, and it's brighter. To me, it's, it's pretty hard to defend not letting them do what they want. Things how we've already approved that. The other thing is that I think is there's multiple hotels around the downtown area that have signs this big or bigger and they're probably lower other than maybe the Marriott. I don't know how tall the Embassy Suites is.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know how tall Embassy Suites is, but it's probably, maybe it's this tall.
Across the river.
But the fact that it's lit, it's downtown, there's residential all around it. I think people who want to live in the urban core, this is part of it. It's like noise. We've talked about this countless times with some of the businesses along Court Avenue. So, I'm inclined to move forward with this. I think it's pretty tastefully done. SHIPO is extremely strict in the historical piece on what's allowed and what's not. So this is, I'm sure it's been vetted extremely well.
Okay, well, since this side of the bench is going at it, Justin?
I mean, I was going to point out the same issue that Nathan brought up with the variance. It's a, it's a high standard to meet and that's, we are confined to those standards. And so, you know, deprived of all beneficial or productive use of the subject property, that's a very, very high standard. So I don't think that's being met here. I, I think in this day and age, GPS is used almost all, all the time with many, many individuals to find location places. So I'm fine with a lot of the stuff. I think it's a good project, but I think, I think that's a hard standard to meet here.
Okay, how about this side?
I kind of agree with what, what Dave was saying. I, I don't see a problem with it. I think they've met a bit of a hardship test. And I know everybody has GPS and we keep saying, well, everybody knows where the Hotel Fort de Moine is. Well, we all live here, so we know where the Hotel Fort de Moine is. I think what they're, they're trying to get at is probably folks from out of town or people that might be coming in for an event or something. But most hotels that you see downtown in the suburbs, all through the city, they have signs. So you know what they are.
And when you say they've met part of the hardship case, what do you mean by that?
In, in terms of the financial, he mentioned the financial issues. If this was not approved, he would have, they would have to go back and, and concur with Hilton and go through some more things with them. So that to me seems like that's a bit of a financial hardship. I mean, I don't know how much of it is. It's, it's a huge investment. I don't know financially what it cost or what it took to do this, but I'm sure it was expensive and it's going to be a very nice landmark for the city. Right in the same area, bigger, brighter, kind of more in your face than, than this sign would be. And, and the other thing that I like about this rooftop sign is that it kind of covers up the air conditioning and the HVAC units. You know, it kind of screens that nicely. I mean, I think they've, they've tried to work it into the architectural planning of it. And I'm sure it's like Dave said, it's been vetted by many other organizations and committees before it ever came to us.
All right. Justin, Marla? Okay, all right.
Nathan? I guess, so I think it's an eminently reasonable request that has lots of good justification. I would, I don't have a problem with it except for I don't think they met the variance test. So, I mean, at risk of upsetting everybody who came out, I generally don't have an issue with that amount of light up that high in this place. But, you know, city council passes laws, they make policy and we, you know, work within those laws and the policy to the extent we can and I'm just not comfortable going beyond. Where they've delineated kind of the restrictions on signs, however, kind of well-intended but poorly applied here. I don't think they made the variance test. So I'm comfortable with staff recommendation. I do think they may, certainly can justify all the type two exceptions that have been requested, but not the variance.
Cool.
Not with checking the count, I mean...
Excuse me, sir, we have a public hearing in progress. Can I help you? Uh, no, and if Councilman Bill Gray would like to check in, he's welcome to come in. Hello, Councilman Gray? This is a hard at work city councilman who checks in on his boards and citizens, so. Okay. Well, yeah.
So Nathan, what kind of questions you have for the variance? I mean, with this being required by Hilton, it's in, it's in their contract with them and if they didn't have this, they've already had it reduced in size from what they had and as Nathan's, or as Dave says, has passed the historical thing. And I know a lot of the older buildings have rooftop things. This is not a brand new construction where the rules are evenly applied and saying, you know, go back to the drawing board, this is a historic building that's already up. But how do you feel about possibility of they're losing their contract with Hilton?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't think we, any of us will ever have that information before us, exactly. I mean, he alluded to this being approved and they would have to go back and it would delay things. That's not, then this project goes under, right? So, I'm not going to speculate about how that, the impact of that.
I think what I'd like to do is springboard off those comments you guys just had. I know that had been brought up, well, this is a requirement for me to get my franchise or my brand. Other contracts or business requirements don't trump or, or, you know, take precedent over city zoning requirements. You know, there, there may be some franchisees that require flashing lights and clowns out front, but that doesn't mean that we have to abide by their agreements. I think the bigger thing we've got to do, and everybody has put their kind of thinking hat on on this one, is when we look at the scale and scope of this building, this is a large building. It's historically significant not only as a building, on the site, in the neighborhood, in our entire downtown. Hotel Fort de Moine is, has certainly been the bellwether for hotels in De Moine. When I see what was proposed here at first blush, it looks like, oh my God, we got signs everywhere. Man, what is going on here? But when you look at the drawings and you look at the scope and scale of what's being requested within the ordinance, it may seem like this is excessive, but when we look at that ground street level, those canopies are very small. Historically, I have no doubt there were canopies and they probably said barber shop and sundry and, you know, enter here for the hotel. All of us at some time or another have been down here to businesses or restaurants or the bars that were here. I don't have any problem with the canopy stuff that's being requested. I think it's on the scope and scale and variance would be in order for those. I do think that as Raj said, he could probably say, yeah, fine, I'll go ahead and scrap my variance request for the 30, less than 30 foot separation on that northeast corner. He could find a way around that. I think what I've been hearing is no one feels a need for them to have the two-legged canopies out to the curb. I think they could work and pull those canopies back. But it looks like the major thing here that you've all discussed is the size and scope of that rooftop sign and how the variance test works, which that's a very important thing for us to keep in mind. My first blush at this was, oh my God, I don't want a big sign on a roof. But when we back up and look at it, based on how it's located, how it's positioned, the height of this, if we had the reverse, if we had a four to five story hotel and we had eight to 11 story condos, apartments, people living across the street and it would shine right into them, I would understand that. Myself, I feel there is a need to have a reasonable opportunity for this location to have a rooftop or an upper parapet sign. Other hotels have it, other businesses have it. I think that's more than reasonable to allow it. Aside from the number of square footage of total signs on here, they would have had the right to have a roof sign. It's just that this is a south facade, which is not their main entrance. But frankly, the city of De Moine changed where people's front yards are with MLK. We no longer have railroads, we now have MLK. So Walnut Street, yes, it's a major street, but the frontage to downtown from the west or south, that's the front now. You can't change where the doors are in the building because they've been there 100 years, but I feel like it's a reasonable request to allow them to have a sign on the top of his building. The fact that it's on the fourth side, the south side, that's not his primary side, I don't see that as a major violation of the spirit. don't see that as a major violation of the spirit and ten of our variance ordinance. So depending on the way the wind blows, I would be inclined to look at allowing that rooftop sign, and I think it would maybe help blend in a few things as well up there, believe it or not. So, we've had a lot of good discussion here, but I'd like to see if somebody wants to put an amendment or a proposal out, one way or the other, we'll see which dog hunts here and what way we go.
Sounds like you just made a motion.
Yeah, nope. Now, there have...
You can continue with that, if that's the direction you're headed, or I'll make one, but I mean, you and I are on the same page.
We're on the same page.
So.
Okay.
Take it away.
All right, well, why don't I try this and we'll see what works here then. I'd like to make a motion to grant a variance, and I'm not gonna be able to talk, as technical is how it's listed here, but I'd like to grant a variance to allow the canopy signs as generally proposed, and, but also denying the covered two-legged canopy signs, they'd have to pull those back and have canopies over those entrances similar in size and design as the others. I'd like to deny the variance to allow them to have less than 30 feet between those smaller vertical signs.
Are you gonna allow two?
Huh?
But you were allowed two of the signs?
Sure, sure. And odds are, he'll probably just do one and put it on the corner, but, but yeah, he'd be allowed to have two signs, but denying the 30-foot variance. And I do, I don't want to toss to the wind everybody that's come down that has had concerns, I think seeing what was presented helped me understand this because I had the same concerns. I don't think this will look like Las Vegas, we're not talking about big bright lights, we're not talking about a big frontlit, fully illuminated, you know, Kelvinator refrigerator sign here. So I would like to propose a variance to allow for the rooftop sign to be installed generally within the specifications as presented within the application for size, scope, and location. So, is that clear enough?
I'll second.
At least from Dave's perspective? All right. So Judy, Bert, staff, is that clear enough?
I think so.
Okay, well, we'll see how the motion goes, but subject to what motion might carry today.
Grant the exceptions.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the exceptions.
And grant the exceptions as requested, yeah, because those go to support those general things. Okay, so we've got a motion, a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four. All those opposed, one, two, three. Okay, so that motion carries four to three. So Raj, you should have no problem getting your franchise operator agreement passed now, and I hope you invite all the neighbors to a special pre-grand opening tour of the new hotel and presidential suite, okay? All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming down and sharing your comments with us. Okay, that concludes our agenda items for business. Those who were here last month, if you've reviewed the minutes, if there are or aren't any changes, would there be a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Marla, all those in favor? Aye. All right, carries 6-0, I was the only one gone. Okay, all right, that takes care of all of our business, and Bert?
Thank you all.
You bet, have a good evening. We don't have to do any other business, elections are in April, right? Okay, all right, all right, this hearing is adjourned.
That really...
That was quick, sentimental for me. But some good thought on a difficult item.